Now is the time and place for a meeting of the Beaverton Planning Commission. For the record, I will do a roll call to verify which commission members are participating this evening. Let the records show we have Commissioners McCall, Commissioner Winter, Commissioner Nye and myself. Commissioner Lawler and Commissioner Glenn Winkle are absent and excused. So we are now at Commission Communications. Commission, are there any communications tonight? Doesn't look like it, so let's move on to... Oh, let the record show that Commissioner Ellis is now joining us as well. So we are now at Staff Communications. Staff, are there any communications tonight?
Good afternoon Chairman McCann, Anna Slatinsky, Planning Division Manager for the City of Beaverton. I do not have any particular communications from staff tonight.
Thank you. Our only agenda item of the night is a work session on the Southwest Milliken Way Extension Project. The order of the work session tonight will be as follows. We will begin with the city staff presentation, followed by discussion and questions of staff by the commission. The planning commission will then hear public comments regarding the work session item. Individual comments will be limited to five minutes. The commission may ask additional questions of individuals providing comments or staff. And with that, we will now begin with the staff presentation presented by Project Manager Dan Turk.
Hi, thank you Chairman. And thank you for the opportunity to talk to you all tonight. I'm here with my colleague Gene Sanishall-Biggs. Will be available for answering questions and providing clarifications. Let me share my screen and get going with the presentation. It should be about fifteen minutes, a little bit more. And then we'd love to hear your thoughts and questions. Gene, are you seeing the presentation?
You're good.
Okay. Well, Gene and I are excited to share the staff recommended plan for the Milliken Extension Project with you, as well as a recommended implementation strategy. Hold on here. First, since we haven't talked to you about this project before, I just wanted to show this slide, this graphic that we had at the very beginning of our process. Just gives you an idea of where the project area is. This is Milliken Way, which is the street just south of City Hall. And the project is looking at the stretch of it from east of Watson Avenue. We've put together a lot of illustrations as we were putting together the staff recommended design. And I'd like to start the presentation with this image because it, I think it gives us a good idea of the why behind the Milliken Project. It helps us envision the future, gives us a good idea of the huge development potential for the downtown and for the area around Milliken Way in particular. This view is looking east along Milliken. The first intersection at the bottom, you see there is that, that's with Watson. So City Hall is, is a little, little behind on this one. Let's look a little more down at the street level where we can talk about how Milliken can support this future vision. And it can do so by building streets for people. Streets for people increase the safety and comfort of people walking and biking. And they also provide engaging places for social interaction, commerce, creativity and fun. Basically places that interact with active land uses, such as restaurants and retail stores. Building streets for people has been part of our project goals. You see that here in the first project goal, which is focusing on people walking and biking, designing Milliken to be safe and feel safe for all users. Also, it's part of the project goal of contributing to a vibrant downtown. You see other goals here. Closing a longstanding gap in Beaverton's transportation network downtown multimodally. Other goals are elevating and addressing the needs of residents in the project area, committing to supporting people of color and people living on lower incomes that could be disproportionately impacted by the project, and then designing with nature. These goals were developed with community engagement. And they were endorsed by City Council during our planning process. These goals, what we've heard from community engagement and the technical investigations that we've done have all gone in to the staff recommended plan. The plan calls for building a complete street from Watson Avenue to Lombard Avenue. From Watson Avenue to Lombard Avenue. A complete street provides a way for people of all ages and abilities to travel safely, comfortably and reliably to where they want to go regardless of the travel mode that they're using. This new connection improves access to Beaverton's Transit Center, which is the busiest in the metro area. It connects to existing bike networks in different places. For example, the bike lanes that go up and down on Lombard. It arrives at Lombard Avenue at a place that sets up the future extension of Milliken Way to 114th, which is in our transportation system plan. The new redesigned intersections at Watson and Hall will be coordinated with improvements that will be made as part of the loop project on Watson and Hall through the downtown area. This new street avoids the Royal Manor Apartments building. This is an apartment building that, as we went out to the community, one of the big concerns was the displacement of the tenants of this building and also the fact that this is naturally occurring. Affordable housing in an area right next to a transit center. So this was, again, a concern that we heard from a lot of people during our engagement process. The team recommends a phased approach to implement this plan. The first part of this approach is a near-term project that focuses on the west end of the street, starting at Watson and extending as far as East Avenue. And then a long-term project would complete the connection to Lombard. And this would happen if and when more funding becomes available or as part of redevelopment of that area. The project team prepared two options for the near-term project. One of the options was beginning at Watson and extending to Hall. The other option was beginning at Watson, the one you see here, and extending to East Street. This second option is what we're recommending as staff to City Council. Ends in a new T-intersection that provides a nice transition between the new right-of-way and the new street with existing conditions. Phase one does not call for the acquisition of the building or the apartment, or the property of the Royal Manor Apartments building. It does help us work on some of the current challenges that exist for people walking and biking along Milliken between Hall and Watson. There's many sidewalk gaps in this particular area. There's also a very tight curve that limits how people driving, walking and biking can see each other. Here as well on the stretch east of Hall. There are a lot of driveways, wide driveways that open up that are sloping, that make it very challenging in terms of ADA accessibility. And speaking of accessibility, building the street all the way to East Avenue allows for an accessible connection along Milliken and then using the multi-use path that the city constructed not so long ago to access the Transit Center. Let's take a closer look at what things will look like along the new street. First of all, there'll be wider sidewalks, fifteen-foot sidewalks that'll have, where different parts or zones of the sidewalk can be used for different purposes. There'll be an eight-foot cycle track. This will provide a space separate from motor vehicle lanes to improve the safety and comfort of people biking of all ages and abilities. And then a curbside space we call a flex zone, which can be used for different uses and is also a buffer between the vehicle travel lanes and this street-side environment. This view is looking west on Milliken. You may be familiar with the Thornton Coffee Building, that's what this is here. And jumping forward, in time, you can see better why we're building these street elements, especially the sidewalks. The fifteen-foot sidewalks along allow spaces for people to walk and pass in groups without getting in anybody's way. Places to gather and feel welcome, just hanging out and not, again, not conflicting with other people trying to get by. And then the space along the building fronts provides places for sidewalk cafes or retail displays. Basically an interaction between what's going on out on the streetscape and what's going on inside the adjacent buildings. The flex zones along the whole street are really, there are so many different ways that they can benefit adjacent property and business owners as well as visitors. Things like bicycle parking corrals, passenger pickup and drop-off, on-street parking. They're also compatible to be used in stormwater management. And this is what you're seeing this particular stretch being used as a vegetative planter. Let's look at the intersections. The Hall intersection first, this is looking north on Hall, cutting across Milliken. The new intersections will have ADA compliant ramps, high-visibility crossings for persons in white, for people, sorry, for people walking in white, for people biking in green. And then a bike box solution to provide people biking that are making left turns, very clear, visible places for them to wait and then clarity of movement when they do make that motion. Sorry, I had my dictation software on, I apologize. Yeah, the next is, we'll be installing rapid-flashing beacons at these intersections for people walking and biking to activate conveniently. There'll be buttons they can activate right where they would be approaching the intersection. Based on our traffic study, the number of people walking and biking through the intersections on opening day will not meet thresholds needed to justify having a signal. This will likely happen in the future as land around the intersection redevelops. One thing to point out here on Hall is you see two lanes going through the Hall intersection. Currently, there are three lanes. The reduction to two lanes improves the safety of the intersections. Is one less, one less travel lane that people biking and walking across Milliken would need to cross. And this is also, this change is, is consistent with what's called out for in the loop project all along. A change along Hall north of Canyon. And then jumping into the future, this same intersection, same perspective. You see the full intersection, sorry, you see the full signals here with the redevelopment around. And then one other thing I'd like to point out here is, is using the space for a left-turn lane. Our traffic study has told us that in the future, these left-turn lanes are going to be critical to keep vehicle queuing from going across intersections. Also having left-turn lanes allows for better safety of the functioning of the intersections. The Watson intersection is very similar to the Hall intersection. Here we're looking south on Watson, cutting across Milliken. You see the high-visibility crossings, the rapid-flashing beacon, the ADA compliant ramps. And then the one thing that's different along Watson, this is in the future. You see there's a bike crossing put in. In the opening day, there wasn't a bike crossing because there are no bike lanes right now on Watson. They would be put in as part of the loop. And when that change is made, the bike crossing would be added to Watson. I'd like to talk a little bit now about how we got to where we are. This graphics, this graphic provides information on the steps that we've taken in the planning process. The timing is below here. You know, we started out by assessing existing conditions based on existing conditions and community values. We developed project goals with the community. These were endorsed by City Council. These goals helped us identify design alternatives and then evaluate them towards the staff recommended plan. I like this graphic because it gives us a good idea of the interplay between the technical work, which is just this upper, upper row, and the engagement work lower here. Every step that we took, we first came up with a work product. Then we would share that work product with the community, get feedback. And based on that feedback, start the work, start developing the work product for the next step. Engagement is really at the heart of our planning. We talked to the community, key times asking for their ideas, concerns and perspectives before doing technical work and then letting them know the results of that technical work. For example, most recently with the design alternatives, we, we went out and asked the community and got a lot of feedback. I'd like to just point you, if you'd like more information about the project in general or specifically about what we've heard from the community along the way, please visit our website and particularly our project library. It has technical work products, links to them, and then also links to summaries of all of our engagement activities. We heard a lot with respect to the design alternatives from the community. People recognize the need for the transportation improvements represented. And they see the benefits of the project as being beyond transportation. As I said before, there was concern about displacement of residents. There was a broad, different perspectives with respect to property owners. Some were willing to sell, others like, would like to maintain relationships with their existing tenants. Some would really like to be part of the new street. Some of the businesses on Milliken highlighted challenges that they would have if they need to relocate and then worry about potential construction impacts. We've begun our engagement for the staff recommended plan. As part of this, we've circled back with residents of the Royal Manor Apartments. We had gone to them and spoken individually with each of the twenty-six households to get their ideas about existing conditions, but also, most importantly, the scenarios around the design alternatives. And we circled back to them to let them know about the phased approach. We had an open house for business and property owners. There's a summary of that event online at our project library. We've had our first, or our, a community advisory committee presenting the plan and getting their feedback. And we've talked to various boards of commissions, such as yourselves. We'll have a wider open house for Beaverton, for Central Beaverton in May, May sixteenth, May seventeenth. And then we have a presentation, much like the one I'm giving now, posted online. And we have an online comment card as well. So, you know, if there are other people that may be interested in providing their feedback or just about the project, please point them to our website. It's a good opportunity to listen to the presentation and, most importantly, let it, let us know what they, what they think about what we're recommending. In Midbay, we'll be distributing a draft concept plan report, which summarizes our planning steps, gives more information about the plan and strategy, such as the project funding and next steps. And then we'll go to City Council on June eighteenth. We'll ask them to adopt the plan connecting to Lombard, which will set our path for that. If they do so, we would move forward with phase one, which is the part from Watson to east. And moving forward, the community would be involved. If, if council doesn't adopt a plan, we may be called to develop a modified version of the plan in return. It's also, it's also possible the project would be halted right there. This is a, a, a quick graphic about the project schedule. If we get the go-ahead from City Council, we would begin with design, get a survey of the area to get more accurate information on, to refine design decisions, to make decisions on project elements such as drainage, pavement utilities, and also the needs, the exact needs for right-of-way acquisitions so that that process can begin. In terms of planning review, this is a public transportation facility. It would be going through a type-three procedure, so we would be going to you all because it does involve the alteration of a designated historic landmark. Listed in the Beaverton Historic Resource Inventory, this is the property. And I'll show you on the next slide at Southwest forty-two fifty Hall. And then we would either decide to present the impact to that building separately than the project or bundle it in with the project for presenting to you. The city is going to need the purchase right-of-way for phase one of the project. And two businesses listed here in yellow, the Northwest College School of Beauty Business and the Criterion Travel Business would need to be relocated with city support. This is a building, Criterion Travel now is housed in a craftsman-style building. And we're investigating the eligibility of this building for the National Register of Historic Places. And we've been actively engaged with these business and property owners along with the rest on the alignment. We've talked to them about the timing and steps of the process involved in acquiring right-of-way. And we've been listening to their concerns. Little bit more about the right-of-way acquisition process, two main things. Right-of-way acquisition follows a standard process established by federal and state law. And the project transportation funds would pay for an experienced relocation agent that would advocate for businesses and, in, in the case of phase one, just the businesses that would need to be relocated, ensuring that they're aware of their benefits and that they would receive those benefits. We know that construction of phase one is going to be disruptive to the local community. And it's very important that it go as smoothly as it can. We will, we will be seeking community input and particularly from businesses and owners of the adjacent lots to help us set effective directives for construction contractors to follow during construction. This type of planning for construction has to happen upstream and it's going to happen during the design process. We will be looking for options to reduce the duration of the construction and offering incentives for early completion, for example, and then also developing traffic control and staging plans. So thank you for listening to the presentation. Really just for us, two questions for you. Is there anything else that you would like to know? And then is there anything you would like us to know about what you think about the plan? Thank you. And with that, I'll stop sharing so you can see me.
All right, Commissioner, do you have any questions for staff? Commissioner Ellis?
Sorry, I was chasing my mute button there. Um, thank you, Dan, for, for walking through that. This is pretty wild, like in a good way. And if you look at that area from Google Maps and just kind of measure, I was like a percent of boring gray in that area, that triangle. It's just a huge splatter of parking lot and weird little roads and stuff. And so it's, it's cool to see, it's cool to see the ideas. You might end up pointing me back to the project notebook online on, on the, the different community engagement notes collections that you guys have done already. I mean, it looks like Damaro essentially would account for most of the needed land to accomplish those, like the number of buildings in that, in that vision drawing. How, how open, I guess specifically them, if not others, how open really are they to moving on or off or doing something different?
Uh, yeah, good question. And of course you can, you can look back. But, yeah, so there's, there's two. First, first for phase one, and I should emphasize that really, if the, the whole plan is, is adopted, which is great, you know, it sets, it sets our path moving forward. But we would really be doing phase one. That's what we're going to have funding for and what we would be executing as a project. So for phase one, there's some property from Damaro Ford. Damaro Ford actually leases. There's one main property owner that owns a lot of these properties for phase one. Connecting to Lombard, there's a service building that they use now that we would need to, we would need to purchase along with the property. I would say that in general, you know, there's a spectrum of reaction from property and business owners. There's some business owners that are, you know, they see that their property would be impacted and are very willing to sell this, sell to the city. You know, it would be a negotiated purchase, you know, at market rate. And others are, they really don't want to see a lot of change. I would say that the owner of the property of the Damaro Ford is in that camp in the sense of really not seeing necessarily the need for the project and really not wanting things to change, whether that be tenants, whether that be property acquisition, whether that be businesses being relocated.
Cool, okay. Yeah, I, I mean, I, I know that you're looking for feedback on the design. And just, just my immediate reaction was like, design-wise, future state-wise, it looks beautiful. It looks great. I was just thinking about the, the sheer square footage that, that Damaro takes up, that some of these other places take up. It really struck me about like how, how would they be willing to move on? And then it led to the next question in my head, which is just from a wise use of resources standpoint. If I look a little bit to the west and I look at the space between Cedar Hills and Watson, there's large tracts of otherwise empty parking lots and abandoned lots and torn-down lots and stuff like that. Does doing this Milliken project either, I'm assuming the city's safe to say that this is a good use of this priority, this money, et cetera, as opposed to going either that direction or where there's already been a lot of growth, which is south of Canyon and doing more there?
In terms of public infrastructure?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, the, thank you Commissioner, that, that's a good question. And Gene, please feel free to add after I, I finish. We haven't had quite this question before. I, I, I would say that, you know, the, one, if you look at the project goals for Milliken, there are goals that have to do with, you know, helping create a more vibrant downtown and providing the, the public infrastructure that would reinforce or incentivize or, or really work well with redeveloped land that's redeveloped and mixed-use or higher density. This project also, the origin of this project as well, and a goal you see is closing the gap in the transportation system. Right now, it doesn't connect to Lombard. So that's one of the reasons we're focusing on this area here as well. I mean, you've identified, I think you're talking about the blocks, at least between Watson and Rose Beege. And, you know, that's something that, it isn't within the project area, but it's something that we would look at in the future because among other things, you know, there's a discontinuity in the bike lanes there. You know, they go to Cheryl's for those two blocks. Gene, I don't know if you wanted to add anything else?
Yeah, sure. You know, you mentioned all those properties that are currently vacant. Those are owned by, the, the ones that, where you're seeing the gravel lots, those were properties that were purchased by BIRA. They were purchased before the pandemic. And you, you may have heard about a project that we had planned on that large area between Canyon and Milliken and, and Watson, so basically to the food carts. BIRA had a developer who we were actively working with to redevelop that. And then the pandemic happened and the whole market changed. And we, we parted ways. We agreeably parted ways between BIRA and the developer. Since then, BIRA has developed a, prepared a redevelopment strategy for all the parcels that they own in downtown. It's more than that one and more than the, the parcels, I guess, like across from the food cart. It's more than that one and more than the, the parcels, I guess like across from the food carts. And so we are, Bura is, Bura staffs are making progress and have a plan for which, for a sort of a sequence of developer proposals to put out there. So you, you asked about those and I just feel like it's helpful to give that context that they're not forgotten. They're actually, there is active work happening on them. You, you also really more sort of tuned in to the, the, the properties, the, the businesses that are there within our project area. There's those two businesses that we would need to relocate with this first phase, the Northwest College School of Beauty and Criterion Travel. And you know, I, I think there's, this project would bring resources to them to, to really facilitate their relocation, help them find a new location and assist them through the moving process. It's hard, it's, I think for both of them, I think they both have expressed concern about having to move. Criterion Travel is a small office. There's a few people that work out of that office every day. They just happen to be an office that's in an old house. The Northwest College School of Beauty is a trickier one. They have, you know, there, as you can imagine, it's a salon inside there and classroom space. And so there's just, their, their needs are going to be, you know, unique to them. But the, the, the right of way services team that we have as part of our consultant team, they, they do these kinds of relocations on transportation projects pretty frequently, right? That's their business. And so we, we're feeling confident that we've got that support in place and ready to work with them. Yeah, I think the honest answer is like, there's, there's a lot of question and doubt and how, you know, how, how's this going to work for them? So, I don't know, I think that's, that, that a fair answer, you're nodding your head, so.
Oh, yeah, it all makes, it all makes sense. And I, and I understand too that those weren't like pointed questions with clear individual answers. It was just a general thought of how all those puzzle pieces.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think the thing to keep aware of too is that this project didn't just kind of come out of this effort, right? Where it's in our TSP, which goes back to 2010. It was identified in the civic plan from 2011. It was identified in the Creekside Plan that followed after that. So there's been a, a long back look at what's the future of the street network in this part of downtown? And this has been, you know, in the background now for a while. It's that we've been doing this planning process because we have funding available. The project has funding allocated from Washington County through their, the major streets transportation improvement program. And that funds transportation projects all across the county and has been doing so for decades. So that's, that's, we're now at a place of, okay, we've got the money to implement. How do we want this to, to, to look and how do we move forward? So I'll stop there, I've said a lot.
Thank you, Jean. I think that's great because you know, there's a lot of background to fill in. And please, anyone, any additional questions? Just two other things with respect to the, the properties. Just to differentiate, you know, from Bura, you know, Bura's been buying up properties and as part of their, you know, they're looking at ways of developing them, you know, according to their mandate. For our project, the purpose, our purpose of purchasing properties is really just strictly for the right of way that we need for the street. So you know, where there are businesses that need to be relocated, it's because we need that right of way. In most of the cases, there would be, the remaining property would be developable and be returned to the original owner. Oh, and then the other thing I wanted to point out, Jean mentioned very, very nicely and succinctly some of the plans and policies for the downtown that, that really have called for this project. Another one more recently that city council has adopted is the complete streets policy. And you know, what you're seeing here in terms of the design and the street elements is consistent with that policy.
Awesome, thank you. And, and sorry, I'll shut up here in just a minute. I did have one more piece of like actual feedback on, on the design part of it. Just in thinking about patronite, like it's, it's a little bit of a if we build it, they will come mentality on once the space is set up and then filling it with the retailers and so on that, that we'd want to fill it with. There's not great service north to south in Beaverton for public transit to get folks who live, who live in, in these, these areas that otherwise probably carry, you know, some more of the retail disposable income style stuff. If, if I want to come into Central Beaverton and eat at like Loyal Legion or something, it's easy enough for me to park and walk around like first, second, third, near the library, those kinds of areas. We have in this area, there's the parking garage next to City Hall. There's the parking area by the shopping center across from Lombard at like Big Five and stuff like that. So I would just urge that as we're looking at the street design and stuff is to not, we don't have, we don't have mint parking rules to enforce anymore, but let's not lose sight of the fact that the people that you'll want to come in and end up financing these, these retail spaces and, and being customers. Like, yeah, like you want them to come off of transit obviously and, and be the locals who live there. But a lot of the funding is going to come from customers who are coming from south and north and they need somewhere to park if they're going to be hanging out in this new area.
Yeah, you mentioned the parking, that is something that, you know, especially from business owners and property owners. You know, we mentioned the flex zones that'll be along the new street the whole way. You know, on-street parking is a potential use for that. And you know, that'll be a process, you know, during the design. We'll try to be, you know, we'll be working with the community to figure out, you know, what's the best use of that space? And certainly, you know, access, convenient access for customers of some of the businesses, especially those that, you know, that are persons with disabilities, for example, that kind of access is very important, not to, not to mention just deliveries and things like that as well.
Commissioner, a call?
I just have a follow-up question. Along with what Commissioner Ellis said, that you know how Cedar Hill areas is so up and coming and every, all kids, teenagers, adults are hanging out in that area. It's fun and happy. How are we looking at connecting Watson, Beaverton Downtown to Cedar Hills? So it all becomes one and it kind of connects with the transportation system? Cause there isn't really anything that's connected at this point in time.
I'll say what I can speak to, and then Jean, I'll, I'll hand it off to you. One of the things about the Milliken project is it's really there to leverage what the, the changes the Loop project would make in terms of connecting the northern part of the downtown, we call Beaverton Central to the Old Town, south of Canyon. You know, right now, that connection for people walking and biking especially is, is just not there. So that north-south connection in the downtown, or at least south of where Milliken is, that's something that, you know, we have a plan that's adopted by council for the Loop project. To the north, Jean, I don't know, maybe you could speak to that?
Yeah. I think I would say, you know, if you, if you think about, you raise a really great point. I think if you think about Hall Boulevard as you go and sort of north of the Max Trax, right? And north of like where the Reeser is. You know, we have a project in our transportation system plan, which was last adopted in 2010 that describes, you know, making multimodal changes to that street, adding bike lanes, you know, to that, to that roadway that we already have today. It's a very auto-oriented street, right? And when you go up Hall, right, then you get to the Cedar Hills intersection and there you are at the shopping center. We don't have a, a plan at this point with funding to implement that project. But what I will say, I'll give a little teaser to a project that you will be hearing more about in the next two years, which is our update to our transportation system plan, where we are going to be kind of casting the net, looking at our transportation policies citywide, looking at our street network, thinking and, and looking more closely about how people walking and biking are better integrated into the network and really end up taking an approach where we're going to want to look for projects that are quick to build and implement to help address gaps in a, in a much shorter term with less investment needed and as well as sort of those larger, longer-term capital projects where you're really building big projects with, with more there, you know, more investment there. So you raise a good point. There's a lot of energy at, over at Cedar Hills. I think we've got a lot of good energy in our old down, in our Old Town and downtown. Beaverton Central is kind of right there in the middle. And our new, you know, the downtown development code and the work that came out of the downtown design project really envisioned something, some, some big changes there. And Milliken kind of fits in with, here's one piece of implementing some of what we saw in that future for the downtown in the, in that plan. So there you go, there's my, there's my take on, on your comment, but I, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. It'll be fun to have it all connected where everyone can bike and walk between the areas versus you have to go in a car only, you know? There's no connection.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Are there other questions? I just had, I was just curious about with a project like this, how you're planning to kind of do the outreach and make sure people are aware of it? You know, if you, I'm not sure what the distance of requirement is. I sometimes feel like there's streetscape projects going on around me that I was never told about until, until I can't get where I want to go.
Yeah, no, thank you, thank you for that, for that question. I, I could speak, I can speak to the outreach that we've done so far. You know, I hope you, if anything, you got a sense from that complicated graphic about, you know, how much community engagement that we've done. You know, we have a community advisory committee that's made up of Beavertonians that live in a lot of different areas. You know, we have 17 business and property owners along Milliken. You know, we go to city boards and commissions. You know, we've had online surveys that we've promoted with A-frames along Milliken itself to catch people using, we have a, an email list for the, for the Milliken project. We've also had various mailings that have gone out not only to the immediate area, but, but also quite a bit out, you know, from the downtown area as well. We've had two of those. So people are, I think, aware of the project as well. You know, moving forward, I think that our sort of catchment area would be something like that. You know, we're having a good open house coming up for, you know, reaching out to, you know, that area as well. We're looking at, you know, what's making sense to us for the invitation for the open house is really again to the north, like the, the commissioner mentioned, a little bit north of Hall there. And then south all the way, probably to Farmington or at least Broadway to the, to the west, maybe going as far as Cedar Hills or, or Hocken, because there are a lot of people there that use Milliken. Jean, I don't know if you had anything to add in terms of the future, in terms of, you know, making sure that people are aware?
Yeah, I'll just sort of give some numbers. So in some earlier mailings, Dan mentioned we had two, I think we sent it out to about 6,000 addresses, both residential and business. And then Dan was just mentioning this open house that we're having next month. And that mailing list is going to be about 2,000 or 2,500 addresses. So that's the, we feel like we're kind of doing a good, you know, broad outreach with lots of different ways of connecting with folks, both who are directly in that area. The people who, you know, use Milliken Way on bike or on foot would have seen those A-Board signs to take those earlier surveys. Yeah, so lots of different ways to connect with people.
Well, yeah, and I think that's great. And I think what I would suggest or encourage in terms of thinking about it is it's not just who's using Milliken, which of course is an important group that you want to capture, but you are effectively setting a tone for how some of these future projects are going to start to look and feel. And so, you know, I think just trying to cast a fairly wide net. I, I have no idea truly who is going to get excited and shot for a round project, but you know, I think casting that broader net because it does speak quite a bit to what our downtown is going to be looking like and where it's going as opposed to just who's, who's using this street, right? You know, that there's, there's another sort of piece to what you were doing.
There's, yeah, no, that's, that's very good. I, I like what you say about setting the tone and, you know, one of the, one of the commissions that, one of the boards that we've gone to repeatedly is the Central Beaverton NAC. And they've been, you know, I would say very informed, very well-informed, but you know, moving forward. I, I think we have had a couple articles in the Your City that goes citywide as well. And that's a good reminder that that should be, you know, that should be part of what we do because although it's a little project, you know, it is setting the tone and really supporting a certain vision for the downtown area that I'd like to think would benefit everybody, not just those that are living downtown.
Absolutely. Commissioner, a call?
Yeah, on that same note, I would, I would suggest if you could create a poster for some of the area businesses, in particular like the coffee shops, the tap houses, the food cart pod, to be able to post and people get a QR code to find out more. I know I personally get a lot of mail and I don't necessarily read it. So, but if I'm waiting for a cup of coffee, I might actually look up what's going on. So I think that's a good way to reach people who don't necessarily live in the district or are using the district on a regular basis or on an occasional basis. So with that, I have a personal request. If you could let me know when the council meeting is and how I could submit testimony. I, I personally walk this stretch of streets pretty much every day. And the sloping sidewalks are quite difficult to walk on sometimes. So I think it's a needed improvement. I pretty much always walk into another person walking or biking, even though these streets don't have a lot of businesses, there is a decent amount of activity. So, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Actually, when I was making the comment about the wide slanted, wide driveways and slanted sidewalks, you know, where Damaro Ford is, I was, and I kid you not, I was thinking to myself, unless you've walked it, you really don't necessarily know what I'm talking about. So you definitely know what I'm talking about. So a couple of things, I will be sending, I will be passing on a, a link to our website and particularly the participate part of our website where you can sign up on our mailing list and we'll keep you updated. But as of now, we're going to city council on June 18th. So, you know, you can, you're, you're welcome to, to let city council, you know, what you think about the project.
Are there any other questions, commissioners? I think that is it, thank you very much. So now we have time for public comments on the Southwest Milliken Way Extension Project. For those viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate by using the raise hand feature in your Zoom menu bar. If calling in, press nine to alert the chair that you would like to speak. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak? I'm not seeing any, so it looks like we don't have anyone today. So with that, we do not have any public comments, so that is the end of our meeting. So thank you very much, we are now adjourned at 7:17 PM.
Thank you so much for the.